I'll go ahead and get started. I think it's five o'clock. Thanks for coming. It pleases me to no end to see this office building room filled. So, thank you all for coming, and those that have been here before, welcome. Those have not, geared for a treat. At first, I'd like to start out just kinda with a silent prayer, just to kinda reflect on what has happened in the past and going into the future. The past, you know, y'all know the school has started, it's going into the fourth week now, and just keep all them students, teachers, faculty, supervisors, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, everybody in the system in your prayers, because they have a lot, they have a lot going on these first three to four weeks, and they'll need it. After a long summer, first thing on their mind is to get the kids back to school, getting them acquainted, and having them be comfortable of what we do. So, just keep them in your prayers. And going forward, now like I said, at the beginning of the school year, we still have a lot more to go. I know the, I know the teachers at their schools, they count down, when is our next holiday? Christmas. Can't wait. But actually, they love, they love their job, they love being in there, and it shows. Our students love to be there, love to eat breakfast, love to eat lunch, and sometimes just, just not looking forward to going home. But some of them, that's just the way it is. That's how, that's how, that's how good our system is. So, kudos to everybody that's, that's involved, and just keep them in their prayers. And after that, we'll stand for the pledge. Thank you. Please rise. Pledge your allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call roll.
Crusoe.
Here.
Daniel.
Here.
Dryden.
Here.
Hartsfield.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here.
Mayberry.
Here.
Nader.
Here.
Rochelle.
Here.
Weathers.
Here.
Non-present.
Very good. Non-present, zero absent, there's a quorum. First on the agenda tonight is a recognition of retired educator, educator, excuse me, and that would be Mr. Dryden. Thank you.
Thank you Chairman Crusoe. I'd like to also express to you, as Chairman Crusoe has, how much we appreciate you being here, being able to gather together on this lovely evening, for this occasion. This is a special time for me, a privilege that I appreciate very much, to stand before you and my fellow board members, and make a few comments in regards to someone who, as we say, and as we often focus upon, someone who has made a great difference, someone who's made a difference. Now most every time, one of the board members steps up here where I'm at, the comment is, or similar comment is made, that I'm about to make. It's hard. It's not easy to look out over the big field of retired educators in this Lawrence County and make a selection. So what I did is solicited some input from some former students of the recipient we have here with us tonight. And those former students happen to be my three daughters. As many of you know, Landon and I raised three daughters, they all three became certified teachers. And that's largely because of the lady that we're going to recognize in here in just a few moments. In 2009, Jane Wiles, Simba Cookie, walked out of the doors of Lawrence Public School. When she did, however, she did not leave unattended. With her marched the accumulated memories of 36 years, 36 years in the school classroom. Years that were filled with pleasure, filled, years that were filled with laughter. I know, because my daughters were there. Years that were filled with imparting knowledge upon the hearts and the minds of countless students. Again, I know, because my daughters were there. Miss Jane's first-year teaching assignment was at Loretta Elementary, a great place to begin a teaching career. I myself spent my first seven years at Loretta. Fifth-grade students were fortunate to gain knowledge from Miss Jane's great teaching and her excellent teaching skills and the techniques that she had while at Loretta. After this first-year teaching experience, Miss Jane moved to Lawrence Public School. For the next 35 years, countless students were blessed as she taught kindergarten, first and second-grade students. Miss Jane was known and appreciated as a teacher who taught and looked outside the box. As a result of her many varied teaching skills and methods, she created the first outdoor classroom at Lawrence Public School. Her principal and director, Butch Mark, even today, as I talk with him for a few moments, spoke very highly of her decision, her dedication, and her effectiveness in the classroom. He referred to Miss Jane as one of the most often requested teachers on the faculty at Lawrence Public School, requested teachers from parents. Mr. Mark especially spoke highly of her enthusiasm and her dedication of being the co-director of the ESP program at Lawrence Public School, the first after-school program, which was a pilot program for the state. Many schools followed that, that program, one of which was New Prospect, where I served as principal. During her tenure, she also created the LPS Arts Festival, the grandparents volunteer program in breakfast. She co-wrote a grant awarded by the Education Foundation. Jane was also awarded LPS Teacher of the Year. She also served as a volunteer in the community. She served as first chair of the Crockett Theater Board, and served as board member for the Lawrence County Library, Mangere, and Farmers Market, both in Loretta and Marchville. She's currently a member of the Loretta Lineage Club. Jane now resides in Loretta and is married to Don Sembay, also a retired educator. She's the mother of Lee Ann Pettis and Melissa, Sister Stover, and has three grandchildren and three great-grandchildren, and I'm told that she's a great super grandmother.
Did that come from my grandchildren?
No, I said it did not. At our Sunday AM worship services, we sometimes use a song with the words, "Little is much when God is in." I'd like to adapt that just a little bit by saying, "Little is much when love, compassion, care, concern, and enthusiasm is in." Again, I mentioned that I had a lot of help in this decision by my daughters. I like to quote them, first of all, from the oldest daughter, Bridget. I remember Miss Jane as being a very caring and patient teacher. I think Bridget experienced some separation anxiety, being the first child, and having been home with a stay-home mom. But Miss Jane made a difference. Bridget said, "I had a difficult, difficult time when starting kindergarten," and she had a place in the back of the classroom where I could go and lay down in the mornings. She let me join the class later when I was spilling bread. My favorite story with Miss Jane happened many years later, shortly after graduating from college, when I went on a trip to Europe. I was looking at the mom of Lisa Penny, turned around, and there she stood. I'm sure not many people can say, as they ran into their kindergarten teacher in Paris. Bridget did. Do you remember that, Ms. Jane?
I very, yes. In fact, I thought that Melissa was talking to me. I thought, it's because somebody said, "Hey, Miss Jane."
So you see, just the little things, the little things that she did in her classroom that made a huge difference. Sure, curriculum is important. We can't take away from curriculum, but there's something that's more important. Something that's more important, that, that has something to do with the success or the intended purpose of that curriculum. And it's the little things, the little things like Miss Jane used in her classroom. And then from Shanta, "I have sweet memories with Miss Jane. She did an excellent job thinking like a child and getting us excited to learn. I remember playing dress-up, studying fall leaves, making clouds out of ice and hot water. One day, she even brought in an empty nest for us, a hornet's nest for us to explore. When I was taking college classes, I remember my professor talking about being an intentional teacher and thinking how Miss Jane was the perfect example of this." You see, teachers who've made a difference. And then Jessica, "From the ages of six, I have vivid memories in Miss Jane's classroom. Her read alouds, her read alouds brought books to life, and I love creating my first stories with her guidance. I have held on to many of them even 30 years later. Her teaching methods greatly influenced my career choices, first as an emergent literacy teacher, and now as a technical writer. I can trace back, many of my foundational skills from my time in Miss Jane's inviting Appreciation for teachers did not end in those early elementary school years. Discussions about great teachers did not stop at our supper table at night. Later, as the girls moved on to New Prospect and then to Loretta High School, there were still lasting impressions made as they had the opportunity to have great teachers like Mr. Donnie Sembay. Often mentioned, I loved that teacher. I remember Jay, my nephew Jay's experience. He was talking to Mr. Sembay about a certain tree that was growing on the Dryden Farm, and he had doubts if that tree was there, so he visited the Dryden Farm and said, "You're right, Jay, you're right." So, he was recognized a year ago, and he's certainly worthy of recognition again tonight. So, the time quickly passes. I want to express to Miss Jane, and also Mr. Sembay, how much you appreciate it, and what a great impact and what a great difference you made on the lives of so many students. So, Mr. Atkins, and Chairman Crusoe, and fellow board members, and people who gathered here tonight, and I present to you the recipient of this month's teacher-retired educator award, Jane.
Next on the agenda tonight is student recognition. Ms. Pam? Whichever one you want to. Whichever, if you're comfortable.
So, when we had the opportunity to recognize a student, we have about 500 students, so I asked a few people in the office, a few people down the halls, to give me a name of a couple of students that would represent Lawrence Public School. Several people, several students were named, but the name that kept coming up over and over was Owen Durham. Owen, Owen is a fifth-grade student at Lawrence Public School. He is a member of FCA, Beta Club, boys' basketball team, cross-country, and indoor soccer. He's an excellent student. Last year, he read over a million words, two million words, two million? Million words, okay. Read over a million words. This summer, he went with us to Louisville, Kentucky, to where he competed with our Beta students. They received 10th place in Group Talent that he was in. Songfest received 7th place, and he was in an individual competition for fourth-grade social studies, and he received 1st place. That's the national champ at Beta, so that was an awesome honor. He also is a great athlete. He plays many sports, not just at Lawrence Public, but in the summer. Those are great accomplishments, academic and athletic. But what makes Owen a great student, and the reason I kept hearing his name over and over, is not because of his athletic ability, and it's not because of his academics, it's because of his heart to serve others or want to help. You can see him in the hallway, talking to other students, it's always encouraging them. He wants to help others. Fourth-grade teachers can tell you, they had a lot of students transfer in last year, and they would always introduce them to Owen. And Owen would show them around, make sure they got through the lunch line, where the library was, all the things that new students needed to know. He's very active at FCA, where he has done devotions, he's led the FCA. He greets students with a smile and hello every time he sees them. Anytime I've seen him in the hall, he's always encouraging someone, and he's always asking how he can help, instead of me asking him, you know, "What can I do for you?" He's always asking us, "Ms. Pam, do you need something? Can I help you?" He was in my office this week doing announcements for us. So he's always wanting to help. Yesterday, I jotted down some notes about him, and I walk out, and there's Owen in the lobby with Ms. Paula, who's got a broken arm, carrying boxes back to her room. That's what Owen does. So he's a great athlete, he's a great student, but what we love so much about Owen is his heart to serve others. So, I would like to present to you LPS Student of the Year, I guess, Owen Durham.
Congratulations, Owen. And I believe, Ms. Pam, you're still up.
School report, okay.
Do you have a presentation or?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
The school report. So, about 500 students, you know, we're just getting started, there's been some in and out. We have about 500 students, 495 to 570 faculty and staff at Lawrence Public. We were here in May, so a lot of the things I may be repeating, Ms. Kim Martin was giving our report in May. But we're still continuing our tutoring program. We have received T-CAP scores, but I think they're still embargoed. We know there's things we need to work on, and there's things we can celebrate. This fall, we did compete in cross-country for the third year, and we're going to start that back up. I know Coach Newsome already has his team picked. We will continue to do the elementary intramural games. Our Beta students competed in Nationals, as I was telling you about. We received 14 awards, five of those were in the top five, two of those being national champs. Owen, that was here in Gentry Franklin, who, who got 1st place in 4th grade science. So that we're very proud of them. And we will go back in Beta this fall. Our LEGO League Robotics team will compete again this fall. We had a, our Arts Festival back this past year that Miss Jane started, and it was the first time we had had our Arts Festival since COVID. We changed things up a little bit and had the students only during the day, and the parents come the night before, which we had a lot of compliments on. Parents could come in the night before, students all day long, and so we'll do that again this, this coming year. Some improvements to our campus, we've added some playground equipment. We still have some that we're waiting to get put up for our UDL classes. We've had some work done for some, from some volunteers and with our staff at the outdoor classroom, our digital signs that were added. We did add tent to our foyer windows to keep people from seeing inside of the cafeteria. If you've been at Lawrence Public, there's a foyer, and then the door, double doors, and we've added tent to where it's a mirror. So if you come in, you can check your makeup and your hair, but you can't see kids on the inside, and that's been very helpful. That's, that was a safety that Officer Glass and some other people got together and did, Ms. Jan Phillips. Hallways were painted and repainted, touch-ups this summer. Some needs that we're still working on, of course, tile in the hallways that we're, we're doing, a breezeway enclosure, some ideas that we've had Mr. Atkins and I've talked about, some upgrades to the gym and the gym lobby bathrooms and things. But we're off to a great start, and we feel like that this is going to be a great year. Any questions or?
Any questions for Ms. Pam?
I would like to thank you guys for supporting our students and trusting the faculty and staff, the increase in, or raise, and I appreciate, we appreciate that. We appreciate you putting your trust in us.
So I'm hearing there was an overabundance of kindergarten?
We have.
So, how did, how did you adjust that?
This year, we actually stayed under the number. We, we have three less, or two or three less than we had last year. So we didn't do, the year before, we did a lottery, but this past summer, spring, we did not have to. So we had enough room for, for everyone.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the recognition tonight is a presentation for Ag Department of Lawrence County School System, this Farm to Table Event. Ryan.
Well, if it's all right, I'll address the board, and then I'll turn and thank our, our students back there that helped. But before I present some checks, I want to say thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to members of the board. You guys make my job really easy when I'm talking to businesses about locating here or expanding here, and so in the month of July, you may have seen in the news that we announced two new companies. We're going to establish operations here in Lawrenceburg. One company, Blickman Industries, will create 50 jobs, and then another company, Magnet International, will create 250 jobs. And this is really good for, not just our community, but specifically for our students. There's a future, there's a hope here, and jobs here for them, and, and you guys make my job really easy because the partnership that we have between our Lawrence County School System, the business and industry, the team that we have made it happen. And so I would be remiss not to first thank you for that. If you look at the seal of the state of Tennessee, there are two words really big on it, and it's agriculture and commerce. And, and I think this system in particular does a good job supporting both of those things. But as we grow, we know it's important to maintain, preserve, and promote agriculture education. And so, working with our local extension agency, working with the business community and the Ag Committee at the Lawrence County Chamber of Commerce, we wanted to expand our Agriculture Week, which happens every June, and this year, for the very first year, we had a Farm to Table Dinner to raise money for the agriculture programs at all three high schools. And I'm very pleased to report, for our very first year, we raised $7,000. That will be divided between all three high schools. I can tell you, next year is going to be way bigger, is it, Rat Keely? Thank you. And so we're excited for that. That event was held in the downtown public square. Many of the students, even you see here tonight, were serving at that event. Many of the agriculture community, the business community were in attendance, and so next year, you'll see a little bit more press about that. Hopefully you guys will be able to attend, and again, it was a beautiful day. But I want to thank you again for what you do, the service you guys provide to our community and our business community, and thank you, again, I don't know how I was supposed to follow Ms. Sembay and Owen, but, 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 you know, seriously, your FFAs here are awesome. So if it's all right at this time, I'd like to invite all of them up, and I will present a check, and we'll do a photo op at that school.
Students, if you'll, we'll get, uh, we'll put some on the stage, some below. There you go.
All right, where's my handshaker? Come on, come on. There you go.
I think, you didn't go that way, just. Okay, all right, ready? Ready, one, two, three.
Thank you guys, thank for the hard work. I believe the school system really appreciates it. Thank you. Moving on, I believe you do not have any public comments, is that correct? Very well, moving on to consent items. Can I get a motion to approve A through E? We got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions regarding the consent items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to report items, we already had A, the school report from Ms. Pam, and moving on to B, personnel report. Mr. Atkins?
Mr. Chairman, I believe everything is available for you on the screen. I will say this, we've had a busy year in human resources, the HR department, and I will speak to that shortly in the director's update, but we've, we've been busy. I will speak to that shortly in the director's update, but we've been busy with two individuals from the middle of May to present day.
Are there any questions regarding Personnel Report or Athletic Supplements? Go ahead for that one.
Mr. Atkins, you found enough teachers?
At the present time, yes. Present time, we are, we have, every classroom has a teacher or has a sub or someone completing a leave that I'm aware of. Now, we do have one area in special ed that is problematic and we hope to address that with a discussion here tonight, but that's our area of concern right now is the special ed department.
And you got enough bus drivers to route?
We can always use more bus drivers. We still are in need of bus drivers. We're covering routes now with some of the plans we have in place, but we could use more bus drivers, most definitely. We're training or certifying three this weekend to start driving for us as well.
Are there any other questions? So is the athletic supplements part of B or is that another? Am I looking at it wrong?
It's just a report item to let you guys see the approved supplements.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Atkins on the athletic supplements. Mr. Atkins, remind me, on the, one of the changes that we adopted this year was to make the athletic director the highest paid supplement, is that a true statement?
The single highest paid supplement, yes.
Now, is there a stipulation, is the athletic director allowed to do anything else or only if you're an athletic director, you're solely, that's all you're allowed to do?
Our policy when we made the adjustments was the athletic director will focus solely on the operation of the athletic department, managing overseeing that department.
Could you roll that on up so we can see the rest of it?
And part of the reason, Mr. Atkins, I'm sorry, is we made that the sole highest paid supplement because we were struggling throughout the county, getting people wanting to step up and take that role of athletic director, is that?
Well, that and the, they were not the highest paid supplement when we made the adjustment. They were much lower than head coaches in some sports, but they were overseeing the department and all of the coaches, scheduling, the eligibility, facility management and so forth. And so we moved them up to the highest single paid supplement for them to manage and address that department.
Only statement I'd like to make on that, Mr. Atkins, is if that is as an incentive to try to get people to fill athletic director spots, now it looks like we've got them all filled currently, but going forward into future, as I can see it, as I reviewed this report prior to the meeting, a coach or an individual who is a coach would be giving up a substantial amount of money. There are coaches on this report who are in the $15,000 range on supplements. And for that coach to take the lucrative athletic director, they're going to give up $7,000 worth of supplements to take the athletic director position because we have laid out the stipulation that the director cannot do anything but director. So just a concern I have with that move, but thank you.
So piggybacking on what John is saying, go down, I see the Summertown in the very first one, he is also principal and. Is that correct? We can do that?
Can do that, yes, yes, sir.
You're only saying you can't coach and be athletic director?
That's correct, that's correct.
And we've said you can't be principal and coach.
Or athletic director?
They can be principal and athletic director.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
They can't be principal and a head coach. Is that a true statement?
Is that written in policy or is that just a practice? Because I'm not aware of that. Let me have been before my time if that was discussed.
I don't know, it's something we need to look at.
Yeah, look at.
I believe I've heard that.
You can be a vice principal and coach.
A vice, yeah.
We'll look at it for a minute, because I may have missed it in something, but I don't remember reading that.
I believe that was in an old policy, but it did reference that. I believe you're correct. But I don't think it's in there anymore.
We just need to verify, so I mean, what y'all were thinking is that, that age-old, what we all were thinking, that if you're a principal, you cannot be a head coach of a sport. We don't believe that that is a policy that we.
I've been in the system since 2007 and I've never heard that.
Are there any questions going forward before we move on? Very well, Director's Report?
Yes, sir.
Update.
All right, Mr. Chairman and the board, we're off to a positive start in academic year, I think you heard that from Mrs. King and her school, but I've been in every school since the first week of school visiting. Good things are happening, a lot of new faces. Of course, every school has an SRO and several of those folks are new faces. But I want to begin by simply saying thank you on behalf of the employees. Mrs. King spoke to it. So many employees have pulled me aside and said, will you please share with the board how thankful we are for the salary increases, how thankful we are for the additional years of service that this board added, all the way down to our folks in the cafeteria, our bus drivers, educational assistants, all wanted to simply say thank you for what you were able to do this past year. Many have told me I plan to retire after last year, but the action of the board convinced me to stay around longer. And that's good because we need those seasoned teachers working with our students. School safety continues to be a priority for us. We're updating our surveillance system. Again, we continue to update and add more cameras for more coverage. We've reinforced our safety protocols, we've had threat assessment team training, our SROs are walking the halls, our principals are walking the halls, custodians making sure doors are closed. We've inspected almost every school that has reported some issues with doors. I've personally been out pulling on doors, checking doors, and we're putting together a request for proposals, a request for qualifications that I'll share with the board this weekend. So you'll see what we're hoping to do with a service contract, maintenance contract for preventative maintenance down the road. That is a big part of Governor Lee's SAVE Act, that doors are locked, doors are secure, that schools are updating their doors. And that's a big problem, not only in Lawrence County, that's across the state. Many, many systems have issues with doors, they're opened and closed every hour and that's a big issue, we're working on that. Our health and safety plan, I will update you on that next month, that is a part of the ESER and the federal requirements. We have to do that every six months and I believe that is due next month and I will share that with you. Mrs. Simpson and her ladies ensure that all of our children continue to eat free the community eligibility provision. Those ladies do a wonderful job. You have the fall sports schedules where you will have those if it's not in your packet tonight, we'll get that information to you. Our enrollment numbers as of today, right around 7,000. Our K-12 is 6,800 and our PVA is around 185, somewhere around that. So we're about 7,000 students in the Lawrence County School System. I spoke earlier about personnel this summer, 209 transactions have taken place. We've onboarded 52 new employees, some are seasoned educators, some are retired educators from out of state, but they're in Lawrence County now and from my conversations with them, they're delighted to be here. They really enjoy Lawrence County and what we stand for and what we do. Also want to say a special thank you to Mrs. Thompson and Mrs. Burks for the work they do. I say that every year, but 209 transactions for two people and that is a lot of work to onboard and offboard and get information together and they do it very, very well. Little update on the building progress or status there. E.O. Kaufman is completed, we do have a few punch list items that Mr. Brown, myself, Mr. Tucker, Mr. Long, the cafeteria manager and his maintenance and custodians walked through and made a list and we've passed that on to the company for correction. Summertown High School is completed, there may be a couple of touch-up things here and there that we're working on. The gym at Loretta, we're told will be completed the middle part of September. We've had some issues with materials and workers that are contracted through the company being able to be there due to some issues with their staff. Our test data from this past year, we will have more information on that once it's released from the state. Right now, it's currently embargoed and we're prohibited from speaking to that publicly, but we will get that information to the board in a weekly update so you can take a look at that. Episodes for the past year, 22, 23, those early post-secondary opportunities, Mrs. Watson, I will ask her to speak to that at a board meeting in the future. Some 1,500 episodes awarded to the students of Lawrence County. I shared that yesterday with Senator Blackburn in a meeting that I attended and she was amazed that Lawrence County is focusing on that type of work. So many thanks to all of our career tech teachers and to Mrs. Watson for their great work. Graduation rate from 96%, great work taking place there. We will continue to focus on our students, our faculty, our staff, their safety and providing them with a quality education. I think Lawrence County through this past year, when we're able to share some data with you, you will see that our teachers put their shoulder into the work last year and a lot of great things happened. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Are there any questions towards Michael?
You may have said it, I missed it, but what about the bleachers?
So we are on track for the bleachers, that is a October installation date. I spoke with the company representative last week about another set of bleachers that we're looking at for future development and we're on track for that. Our issue, Ms. Rochelle, right now is the wheelchair lift, there was a delay with the company on that and that's holding this up. But we hope to be on the timeline of September, October, if I remember correctly, on installation.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
How are we on space in our schools to adapt for all the new growth in Lawrence County? I know there's new growth from county line to county line.
Right now, Ms. Jacobs, I would say that our classrooms are, we're within compliance of the law, the required numbers, the average, but I would say this, if there is significant growth in Lawrence County in the next three to five years and we're maintaining the enrollment numbers that we have now, we're going to need to be planning for future growth going forward. I think the board understands that, I've shared that, I've spoken to several folks in the community about that, but I don't think that the folks are as concerned about immediate growth as we are. I think they're anticipating that, but it may be at a slower pace than what we envisioned.
In the Summertown Orchard, there'll be around 250 homes and they've already started clearing it out. They're already starting all the electrical, you know, looking at it. In the south end, there's 40 to 60 new apartments going in. Out my Glendale Road, there's 15 new apartments and all over the whole county, it's booming. It's went from 25 electrical inspections a day to 35 to 40, which has never happened here. So that tells you a story in itself.
And I've spoken with folks and asking them to get us some data so that I can compile something. I think Mr. Knight brought that up at one of our previous meetings and we're working with Mr. Egley in the chamber. We've had conversations both with the mayor and with county executive about this. I do believe there will be a time when we will need to have a planning session and with some projected growth in what our plans are.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to do something a little bit, before we move on to this other subject, I'd like to do something a little bit unorthodox and kind of put this person, put this person on, well, anyway, if Officer Glass would come up, and I know you might, I might put you on the spot, but. But I want you to walk us through your demonstration that you had at LPS about a couple of weeks ago, just to let, just to let us know in the public what goes on through a so-called safety event, if you don't mind, without going into long lengthy 30-minute detail.
You asked me to take a mic, I'm always long and lengthy. Well, I performed a demonstration in Lawrence County Public School with my AR-15, I'm assuming that's.
Yes, I did.
We shot some rounds off, not live rounds, they were dummy rounds, inside the school, the very first day the teachers came in. Like I shot around 30 rounds inside Lawrence County Public School in different areas. Front lobby, in the office, down the hallways, in classrooms, and I put the teachers in the classrooms at their desk pretending they were working at their normal pace or whatever they normally do, just to see what they could hear. And come and after we done this, we came back into the cafeteria and I just asked them, what did you hear? What described to me what it sounded like? A lot of them, from one end of the hall to the other end of the hall, never heard anything. They said they didn't, because I told them, I said, keep count of how many shots you hear. I shot roughly 30, most everybody said they heard about 50 or 60. So, and even though that round doesn't hardly make the sound that a live round would make, it's really, really close to that. So being inside the school and what the teachers, faculty, staff, students are going to hear in the event of it actually happening is probably not realistic to them being ready for it. I know they shot some rounds here in the central office a few weeks ago, my wife knew it was happening. She said it was like the third shot that Chad shot in here before she realized what was going on. So why we done that? We just want to make everybody vigilant, to pay attention to what's going on in your surroundings, that that sound you may hear, your mind will automatically make you think that it's a normal sound, it's a door closing, books falling. So we done that with our faculty and staff just to kind of give them an idea of what they need to be listening for and to be vigilant. So I don't know if y'all have any questions or agree about that, but I thought it was a really good exercise.
Was it the first time? I imagine this is the first time you've done it, right?
It's the first time I've done it.
That was pretty, that was pretty good. Has any other schools doing that or is that just something that you came up with?
Well, I wanted to do it in our school, I don't know if any of the other SROs done it in their school or not. I know Officer Doring has done it at Lawrence County High School before, as Mr. Atkins said, they didn't get word out there, but they can scare people, but.
But that's what we want, I mean, if you tell them what's going to happen, they won't, it's kind of a surprise, right?
Right, yeah. And I would have loved to have done it and not them knowing what was going on, but in that situation, you have to let faculty and staff and everybody know, because we did have, some of the teachers had their kids there, so we wanted them to get their kids gathered up, that a few teachers had their kids there to let them know what was happening because I mean, we don't, you don't want to scare them, but you still want to get to know that as well. I thought it was excellent exercise.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody have a request? Go ahead, Mike.
I want to say this about our SROs, as they attend the trainings each summer in Gatlinburg, it's not surprising to me, but it may be to folks who aren't around those SROs, of how many other districts reach out to our folks and ask questions. What are you doing? How are you doing this? How, your director of schools is at the conference, your board is all about safety. They get calls and contacted a lot about how forward-thinking we are here and that's a testament to Lieutenant Doring and to all the SROs to treat every one of those children as if they're their children and every one of those faculty and staff as if they're family members.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I have something I'd like to state to the board. And first off, I'll state, Mr. Atkins and I have already spoken of this and I always I'll take this opportunity to welcome in Mr. Atkins and his responsiveness to me as I'm sure to the rest of the board members. Appreciate you always answering the calls and finding out the information. A lot of times when I bring an issue, a lot of times it's the first time you've heard about the issue. But one I'm going to bring up ties directly with what Officer Glass just stated, he just testified to the board that he shot 15, 30 rounds. testified to the board that he shot 15, 30 rounds in the school, and the teachers didn't hear but about 15 of them. One of the schools that I represent, and for safety concerns, I won't name the specific school, but we have communication issues at one of our schools. And I don't know who in the system decided to change over our phone systems to an internet-driven phone system, but at one of our schools, a bunch of our schools in this county, it is internet-driven phone system, meaning when the internet is down, so is the phone. And on top of that, I timed it myself, and for this administrator at this school to make an all-call to his whole staff, 15 seconds before his mic keys up. How many rounds can you sway off when they are 15 in 15 seconds?
More than 15.
Thank you. There are certain things that I allot some leeway, there are certain things in life that you work on, there are certain things that you get fixed. We are four weeks into the school system, and we still have issues with communication, it's gotta be fixed, and it needs to be fixed yesterday. And my expectation, which I'm sure is the board's expectation, because every one of us has made the statement, including all the faculty and staff in this office, that safety is number one. Going four weeks with a safety concern is not demonstrating that safety is number one. So, whatever we have to do, Mr. Atkins, whatever company, we've gotta get involved in this situation, my expectation, I believe, and probably the board's expectation, is that they're on site tomorrow, finding out what needs to be done with this issue.
I can tell you this, I spoke with Technology today, the gentleman who's overseeing that, and he has found what he believes to be an electrical issue, a wiring issue of some sort, where devices are trying to bounce off IP addresses or something, and he has a solution for that. As far as the phone issue, when that was reported to us, when I heard about it, a device was ordered, contact was made with the company, and I believe we're just waiting on that. And that would have been at least two and a half weeks ago for that to be ordered and coming into us. So, you're right, quick as we heard about it, we were on top of it, addressing those outcomes and those issues, but we're also at the mercy of those that send that device to us. And so, we have plans in place, and I believe Technology has been up there several times to address that issue with them.
Well, again, I will say, I acknowledge that, and I appreciate that always about you and your staff, but just for the board and for the community's knowledge that we take safety serious, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further questions for Michael? Moving on to executive committees, they think there was 13 approvals. You can read them all, does anybody have any questions regarding any of those? If you could take the time to go over them, or I'll take a moment if you would like to read them, and if any questions for them.
Okay. Question on number nine, removal power pole at the elementary school, 24-9, and 24-9, yes. Is that just, what does that consist of? Be $25,000, and they're gonna charge the same thing to put it back?
Well, it was, when they removed that, and I need to send you a picture, and the board a picture, to see what the issue was there. In the center part of the side parking lot, we had a power pole that was leaning, and it had numerous wires, cables, coming into it. And as we were getting ready to pave that area, we did not want to leave that post, that pole, in place, so we had it taken down to put a more green box, one of those electrical green boxes there, and so it's safer, there's not as many overhead wires. This was originally told to us, shared with us, it would be a $100,000 job, and we were reluctant to move on that at $100,000, but at the price that came back with some outside companies that said, "We can do it for this." If you can see that before and that after, and what it did to that campus, and what we believe to be safe for anyone on that side of the building now, in case something were to happen. People could bump into that, run into that post. Now, we have some barricades up around that green electrical box that ensures safety.
Any other questions? And most of these were, a lot of them were a time-issue thing, is that correct?
Yes. As we were getting ready to pave there, the board had approved some paving some 18 months ago, when we wanted to pave, and the company could not do that, and then they, hey, we can pave up there, and we did not want to pave and then come back in and tear it up to only pave again. So, we wanted to try to be more proactive and good stewards of a taxpayer dollar in regard to that, Mr. Hartsfield. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
It did, I just, I don't know how they, the same price of 24-9, 24-9, how they could get them equal, is that two different?
It is, two different, two different companies.
It's not that strange.
Any further questions? Moving on to LCEA, do you have, go ahead, you got the floor.
Jerry Garrettson, our UNISER will be here in August between 28th and 29th with some other people from TDA, and he'll be going around here, and he's gonna be collecting caucus signatures, and he's going to also try to make everyone aware that payroll reduction is no longer allowed in the school system, and that everyone will either have to switch to EZ Pay or something like that to have these, you know, it's no longer allowed to have to do that. So, we want to let every, get that out to everyone, and also to let him know that, you know, he will be in, excuse me, he'll be in the schools and speaking to everyone.
Now, that was a state, a state decision and not a...
Yes, it was.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It was a state decision.
Okay.
It wasn't from the local school system.
That's right, that's right. Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. Moving on to Tennessee Legislative Network, Ms. Brenda, do you have anything to add?
Beginning August 21st, Governor Lee is having a special session, and it will focus solely upon safety. There's 18 different points, the first four are mental health, school safety plans and policy, healthcare provider's duty to warn about potential violence, offenses of committing acts of mass violence. I think this is a good thing, just hope we get a lot of good out of it.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Did this money provide anything extra to the school system in regards specifically to SROs? I know the county funds SROs now, but did they provide that, or would it provide that extra SRO to be able to fill in for one when they couldn't be at the school?
So, I tell you this, Dr. Mayberry, the SRO money that came down went directly to the sheriff's office, and they had to provide an SRO at every school, which they did, and I believe for the first time in the Lawrence County school system history since the origination of SROs, that we have two at Lawrence County High School, and one does serve kind of as a floater, and I think Officer Doring serves in that role as a floater. So, there's two over there, and there's one at every other brick and mortar in the county.
Is there one now at Summer Town Middle School?
Yes, sir, yes.
Any other further questions? Thank you, Brenda. Moving on to G, the Fall District Meeting will be September 14th in Fayetteville. If you're planning on going, just get with Ms. Kaiser, and she'll arrange something for you, or if a group's going, we can take advantage of something. Any questions regarding the Fall District Meeting? Moving on to items for consideration, under three budget items, and A, Director's discretionary funds.
And, Mr. Chairman, I shared in the weekly update just a request from audit that the discretionary fund that I have to do good works, recognition, rewards, so forth, that we make sure the board hears that in a public meeting, that we do that. Several, several weeks ago, I think I gave you a printout in the weekly update of every expense that has been, that fund has been used for, and when Mrs. Elitch and I met with the audit, it was not, hey, you got a problem here, it's just, we think it's safe and better that you just have a public meeting and present that, so the board can be aware of that. I think you were already aware of it, but it's now that we formally recognize that. And if you have any questions and something I may not have cleared up, Mrs. Elitch can speak to that as well.
Do we need to make a motion on that, or is that just an update?
Well, I think it would be wise on for everyone's behalf, just to say that we have approved these discretionary dollars for the director to use in this matter.
Okay, if it's in this contract, do we still have to do it?
That's what we asked.
Yes, that, we have asked that question, yes.
So, so you addressed it and brought it aware of the auditor, would that be a glitch in our audit, or?
No, I don't believe so, no.
Okay, so, can I get a motion to approve a discretionary fund?
Make the motion to approve Director's Fund.
We have a motion in a second, are there any questions? Call roll.
Mr. Crusoe?
Uh.
Daniel?
Yes.
Dryden?
Yes.
Hartsfield?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayberry?
Uh.
Knighter?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Weathers?
Yes.
Ninas?
Motion carries. Moving on to B, Tennessee paid parental leave resolution.
Mr. Chairman, this is a new law in the state of Tennessee that took effect in the spring, and districts and the state are trying to figure out the pathway forward on how to address this. We're not sure at the moment, the reimbursement from the state, what that entails, and I think I shared in the weekly update, an example about a teacher who is at a certain level, is out for maternity leave, will that teacher receive that amount of daily compensation from the state, or will that teacher receive the beginning salary from the state? And we're still working on that. Legal counsel for the Department of Education is supposed to send us something soon, so that we know how to address it, but the resolution is in your packet, and it's also asking that this district set aside $50,000 for compensation services that may be needed as a result of this new law.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Back to Mr. Chairman, I think I gave you the wrong number, it's 100,000.
100,000, okay, that's a little different. Can I get a motion to approve the parental leave resolution?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve in a second, are there any questions for Mr. Atkins? Please call roll.
Weathers?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Knighter?
Yes.
Mayberry?
Uh.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Hartsfield?
Yes.
Dryden?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Crusoe?
Yes.
Ninas?
Motion approved. Moving on to C, contracted labor security for after-school hours at the J.C. Barnett Center?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Atkins.
Mr. Chairman, our SROs attend numerous events throughout the school year. They're required to get so many hours through the sheriff's office, so that they can have certain holidays off and the summer off, and by attending art festival, by attending basketball, football, volleyball, after-school events, the SROs accumulate those hours pretty quickly, and it's a good thing, it's great to have them at those events. But, from time to time, we do have security needs for after-school events at the J.C. Barnett Center. Our officers, once they reach their hours, and anything above that is just donated time. Well, it takes them from their families, it takes them from doing things that they need to do to be at their best each and every day. So, we're asking the board to approve $5,000 for compensation, it could be SROs, it could be city police, it could be state patrolmen, but we do wanna make sure that our faculty and staff members who are assisting students after hours do have security in place, just as our folks do during the school day.
I got a motion to approve, I have a second.
I got a question.
Let's get a second, and then we'll have questions.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second, go ahead.
On that $5,000, what if it goes above that?
I don't, I mean, if it does, I would come back to the board and ask, but I think we've tried to calculate out what that amount would be. Mrs. Elitch and I did some math one day, but now, I will say this, anything can happen, and I think we've learned that over the years, there may become at some point a greater demand for after-hour security, and if that were the case, I would wanna notify the board well in advance that this was gonna come up.
Any other questions? Is this, is this gonna be an outside contractor, or is it just gonna be SRO taking this role, getting the, getting the money?
It would, we would like to reward our SROs who are willing to do it, for all the work that they do for us, and giving them a little opportunity to earn maybe some money for Christmas, or birthdays, or whatever.
Would they receive the money plus the time off?
No, sir, they can't, they can't double deal. It's for those, some of them already have enough hours right now, from hours last year, to cover, they don't have to do anything after hours. So, we're trying to find a way for them to offer their services, but to also appreciate their time.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Crusoe?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Have you checked with the county executive? Because when there was a changeover from us funding our seventh SRO, the county took it over, we tried to compensate the SROs, and that's what brought around the, brought the issue up. And they passed a series of mandates, I think the first one was it had to pass the budget committee, and then once it passed the budget committee, it had to pass the entire commission. You remember that?
Very vaguely.
And then they did it, well, I'm not gonna go there. So, you might wanna check with them and see if they're okay with it. I'm fine with it, and I guess everybody here is, but they passed some policies that any compensation coming from the school system had to be approved, one by the budget committee and two by the county commission, in essence, to stop us from doing that. It's been about...
I don't remember that.
Yeah, been about four...
Four or five years.
Maybe if we call it contracted, you know...
Yeah, but that's what I was gonna say, this would be, like, extra security, these officers are not on duty, that is extra security.
That's right.
They may be fine with it, that's great if they are.
If we call it contracted, I think we can do, in our discretion, what we need to do.
But, Dr. Mayberry, I will look into that.
Call roll.
Crusoe?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Dryden?
Yes.
Hartsfield?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayberry?
Uh.
Knighter?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Weathers?
Yes.
Ninas?
Motion carries. Moving on to D, additional funding for Loretta High School gym parking lot.
Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned earlier, we're nearing completion on that, I was down there today, bleachers and floor work is beginning, the bleacher work is just final assembly, but the actual surfacing of the floor is still a little ways away, but we hope to be in there within the month, next four weeks, to use that facility. As we've worked through the bond money, Mrs. Elitch has done an outstanding job of managing those dollars, so that everything that's been paid so far is through the bond. We have exhausted that bond money now, and we will be dipping into the $425,000 that the county, the board approved in 2021. Our best guess right now, and Mrs. Elitch doing the math, is that we will probably be around $30,000 short when it's all said and done. Our biggest obstacle, our biggest challenge and financial burden was due to the parking lot and some soil issues, and we had to make some adjustments there to prevent the deterioration of the parking lot in a few years, and I shared that with the board as well. So, we're looking at tapping into our $425,000 that the board approved several years ago, and we will at some point be asking the board for about $30,000 more to complete that project down there.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions regarding additional funds for the parking lot? Please call roll.
Weathers?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Knighter?
Yes.
Mayberry?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Hartsfield?
Yes.
Dryden?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Crusoe?
Yes.
Nanas.
Motion carries. Moving on to item E, Summertown Elementary School parking lot, emergency repairs.
Ms. Chairman, this is an ongoing issue that we've experienced at Summertown. We have met, we've come up with several plans to address this. The time delay, I didn't want to speak to that just momentarily. We had an unfortunate accident up there that led to the passing of a beloved faculty member, community member. And we were prepared at that time to address the issue. But some other issues complicated that, and we were on a preservation order for almost nine months. Once that preservation order was lifted from the firm, we enacted emergency measures and began a process of addressing that. I'm presenting to the board tonight that we want to continue with the emergency status. It's difficult getting companies to come in and do that work, and we would hope to avoid a process that could linger and drag on and get us back into the winter months without action being taken. Our crew, maintenance, county maintenance, is doing some work to address an area, but we're going to have to have some specialized equipment and personnel to come in there and address the issue on the north parking lot.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Are there any questions regarding emergency status repairs? Take roll, please.
Crusoe?
Aye.
Daniel?
Yes.
Dryden?
Yes.
Hartsfield?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayberry?
Aye.
Knighter?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Weathers?
Yes.
Nanas.
Motion carries. I believe number F was removed from the agenda. Moving on to four facility items for consideration. We have one, a request to construct New Prospect outdoor basketball court.
Ms. Chairman, this is just the work of Dr. Jones and her folks to provide her students with an outdoor basketball court, very similar to Kaufman. And it is no charge, no expense for the system. This is all in-house at New Prospect.
Move to approve.
Second. We got a motion to approve in a second. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to five, personnel items for consideration. A, full-time receptionist position at Summertown High School.
Ms. Chairman, this is in continuing with some safety concerns and protocols that we have up there. A full-time receptionist could relieve duty of one of the individuals in the office so that some attention by that individual could focus on chronic absenteeism, student attendance.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Approve.
Second. I got a motion to approve in a second. Are there further questions? Please call roll.
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Knighter?
Yes.
Mayberry?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Hartsfield?
Yes.
Dryden?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Crusoe?
Yes.
Nanas.
Motion carries. Moving on to B, educational assistance for J.C. Barnett Learning Center.
Ms. Chairman, this is just out of need for a growing enrollment, challenges that the school system faces. As we address those in one building, it creates some capacity challenges at others, and this is to remedy some of those challenges.
Do I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I got a motion, Doc. Second.
Second.
I got a motion in a second. Any further questions? Call roll, please.
Crusoe?
Aye.
Daniel?
Yes.
Dryden?
Yes.
Hartsfield?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayberry?
Aye.
Knighter?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Weathers?
Yes.
Nanas.
Motion carries. Moving on to item C, contract for maximum educational services for special ed teacher.
Ms. Chairman, this is following up to a response to Dr. Mayberry earlier with personnel. Special education needs and demands are increasing. There is a shortage of folks going into that area, and there is a large migration of folks leaving special ed to go into general ed. And that's something that the state's aware of, we're aware of. This is our first attempt with an outside service who can provide us trained, certified educators. They do all the onboarding work. We're looking at four folks. We already budgeted for special education teachers. What we're asking tonight is that budget would have to increase by $70,000 for four contracted employees. At the moment, we've only been able to acquire one teacher in the special ed field because other districts have adopted this and hired those folks. So we're short, but we do have a plan, and they continue to work and try to find us personnel to service our special education students. So we're asking the board, with the budget that we already have in place for these teachers, this is an additional $70,000 for contracted services.
We approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve in a second. Go ahead.
When I read this, is this falling in line with the old temp service that used to be used by manufacturers? And if so, they're not paying the benefits the county pays? Because those temps, back in the old days, maybe still now, they didn't have insurance, and they didn't have all of other things that the regular employees, that was one thing. Second thing, after 90 days, you could hire those temps in manufacturing. Can you hire these temps if we need them? Third is, where are they getting them? If they are certified teachers, where are they getting them and we can't find them?
Well, I would say this, on the, can we hire those folks? Within the contract that we have, there are some restrictions on us hiring them. And I think for us, it might be a calendar year. After that, we could, but not while they're under contract with us. These folks are much like traveling nurses, medical professionals. They've chosen this path versus going into a school setting. Now, why they've chosen that, I don't know. But they have chosen to do this kind of work.
Okay. Traveling nurses get paid more. Are these people being paid more through this temp service than we can pay them? Is that the reason they're doing it? Or they just don't want the hours that would be involved in being a full-time teacher?
I think their hourly rate is probably a little lower than what we're paying in Lawrence County. But the company does pay all their benefits. They have the deductions. Mrs. Ellis and I have a printout from the company. Here's what they're going to pay the employee, here's the benefits packages and all that, and breaks down to what the company is paying.
Fourth question. Have y'all run the numbers to see if this is going to be, in the long run, cheaper to do with this service than it would be to beat the bushes? If that's what we got to do, call MTSU? I know there is a shortage of teachers in the education programs across the board. But have you and Ms. Ellis run the numbers to make sure that this is not going to cost us more than a permanent teacher in Lawrence County?
I think when we ran those numbers, the benefit package and everything that we paid, and what it would cost us to get a comparable position, just in one area that we're looking at right now, it was going to cost us, I think it was $31,000 more if we, on the position that was leaving us, to offer them a certain package, would have been $31,000 more for us to maintain that employee than this company. But I will get some actual numbers. I don't want to mislead you on that, because there's multiple positions that are in great demand, and these are higher level than a traditional special ed teacher.
Especially the contract that says when we could hire those people. Because if you use them, and they're excellent educators, we need to hire them.
And I think we would definitely pursue that. We would not want to miss the opportunity to let somebody put down roots in Lawrence County.
Because you know what kind of job they're going to do, if you have them and you.
Yes.
Mr. Agnes, voice.
Are these retired teachers that have come back as a second career?
I think.
Where they can draw retirement and then do this on top of it?
It is possible. I believe the one that we have is like 26-year veteran, and so maybe doing this on the side.
That would explain why they're doing that.
But now, we've had trouble, like I said, of attracting folks, because other districts are doing this. And some folks want to travel. They're young, they could be young, they could be retired. So we don't know enough about the clientele to say, okay, they're fresh out of college and they want to see Tennessee, or whatever. But we do know that one of them, I believe, is a 26-year veteran who's taken on this work.
Any further questions? I got maybe two. Who's going to be overseeing this?
So this is Mrs. Whitney Moore, special ed supervisor, and Melody Jaeger, special education supervisor. And these folks are paid for, I think, seven hours a day, and they're only paid if they work. It is not a contract. They fill out a timesheet and turn in to us. So if we get out early, 12 o'clock one day, they do not get paid for a full day. They get paid till 12 o'clock.
And they will have say-so if they're good enough to be in this position, or send me another one?
Yes, we have, we, yes. We have full control over the quality that's in our buildings, and if we needed to move in another direction, we can.
Okay. My next point, it's not a question, but as long as I've been on this board, and I think Brendan, Dr. Mayberry, this is, I believe, this is the first step we are doing to have an outside contractor come in for our employees. Is that correct?
As far as.
We've thought about the idea of custodians, of bus drivers, but am I correct? This is the first one.
Only time I've known.
I think so, yeah. So we want to be careful about going down this slippery slope and not say, all right, this is a great idea, let's go further. Let's do something. You see what I'm saying? Let's try to stop it here, instead of going, well, we're low on here, let's go to contract.
Yeah, I think we would prefer to have hired folks, have them in our building as Lawrence County school system employees. Unfortunately, in this area, that's not available in the special ed world. And if things do not change going forward, we're going to be facing similar issues in the core subjects as well. And we've shared that with lawmakers, that something has got to change, because there is additional stress in school systems right now with lack of personnel. You've probably heard some of the districts are 600, 700 people short. We're not there, and we don't want to be there. But something does have to change at the level above us to address this.
I agree. Please call roll.
Question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
How, say, these four contracted employees that, you know, they're hired and for this amount of money, but are they paid differently hourly wages? Or how would that be determined? I mean, one make $20 an hour, one make 30, one make 10? How is that, how are we going to handle that?
On the screen, Mr. Hartsfield, is some of these positions that are paid. We do not handle that. All we do is take the timesheet that they fill out. The company who provides them determines their value, their hourly rates, and they pay them. We just take the timesheet, complete, issue a check.
Just give them a figure.
We have an hourly fee for a certain amount of hours per day, and then we compensate this company. We pay this company, but the timesheet dictates what we pay.
Dr. Mayberry?
If this place, like you say, and they come from all over, for whatever reason, to Tennessee because it's beautiful, or whatever, are these people going to be vetted extremely well? Because things happen at other places that we don't need to have here.
That was one of the questions we asked Dr. Mayberry, is what is their onboarding process? And they follow the same guidelines that we do in the TBI background drug screen, so forth. And I think there's some counties north of us who are using this company.
Will TBI cover other states there?
I believe they do, a universal kind of background check, because I see some every now and then from incidents in other parts of the world.
Great points. Call roll, please.
Weathers?
Yes.
Rochelle?
Yes.
Knighter?
Yes.
Mayberry?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Hartsfield?
Yes.
Dryden?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Crusoe?
Aye.
Nanas.
Moving on to item six, other items for consideration. Under A, approval of student disciplinary hearing authority committee. And I believe that was in your packet with all the names of, on the authority board. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to B, athletic cooperative agreement addendum with South Lawrence Golf and Sacred Heart Loretta.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve in a second. Any questions regarding these? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to C, Michael Drive, Michael's Drive, this is from another board member. Was this taken care of, or no?
The matter has been addressed, but Mrs. Jacobs, who asked for this to be added, asked that it remain on there. She wanted to make a few comments.
Sure, no problem. Go ahead, Ms. Jacobs.
Well, I think all of you are aware of the situation that happened tonight during our meeting. The main focus has been on safety of kids. These kids kind of fell through the cracks, through no fault of their own. They had three quarters of a mile. They weren't going to get them because of the road. Now, situations arise that we're not responsible for, but we can't let this happen. What if one of those children had, somebody picked them up, come up a storm, whatever? I've been on here 21 years, and we've always addressed safety issues. We put school nurses, SROs, we put counselors, cameras. And I'd like to thank each and every board member that took their time to drive that road and see the situation. I'd like to thank the parents that took off from work and fixed the road. But let's don't let this happen again. Let's come to some conclusion, the county, whatever it takes to protect these kids. These kids belong to us. Whenever we come to this school board, we come for the children, not for us. And those are our kids. We need a solution.
Very good. Very good. And that's, and that's a contestant of reaching out to your commissioners, reaching out to the road superintendent. I mean, he just got re-elected. You know, ring his phone off. I mean, call his office every day and say, hey, listen, these roads are, these roads are terrible. And, 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 you know, just ring them off the hook. Get your commissioners, call the mayor. I, I'd do anything to get these roads where it's up to speed so our buses can go down there and, and, and have the safety for our children. Go ahead.
Well, this supposedly is a private road. It has twenty-one houses. It has, it's three quarters of a mile. It has a name. I know there is a legit, legal fund where the, the original contractor is supposed to pave the road. In that situation, it fell through the cracks. These kids and parents are not responsible.
I, I, I agree one hundred percent. That's, that's true.
That, those kids fell through since the first day of school till yesterday. Those kids were not taken home. I'll give you an instance. On my own road, a week ago, a little boy wandered off and got lost in a cornfield. Everybody around was hunting. We found him half a mile off the road. What if one of those children took off like that, walking that distance? Are we, as the boards, are we going to be able to face the public and say, hey, we did nothing? Now, this is something that don't need to happen again. Whatever we have to do, it needs to be taken care of.
Dr. Mabry.
This came to my attention last Wednesday. From Wednesday to Sunday, I traveled down that road three times. I traveled down it when the holes were there. I traveled down it and brought somebody with me to get an opinion about the road. And I traveled down it Sunday afternoon after the gentleman, is it Aldridge? Took his tractor and box blade and drug that road and filled in the potholes. Now, it's not important about the people, the adults. I'll say that. The adults that were involved in this, they don't matter to me. The fact that those children, I think it was ages six through fourteen, on that road, were let out at the intersection of Aldridge and Michael. They were let out. They didn't know, bus driver didn't know who was there to pick them up. There was no license check of who was to pick them up. Some of these kids were, had to walk at different times. That is a tragedy waiting to happen. And when you go to a school, any school in this county, you have to show your ID before you get in to the, pick up a child. It don't matter if the principal knows you. You got to show your ID. And we have gone through so many things in this county over the last eleven years that I've been on this board. We've talked about the SROs. That was a battle. We've talked about the background check. Fortunately, that wasn't a battle. That was approved very rapidly. We have spent money, time, and again to improve the safety of these schools. We're working on a project right now at Summerton Elementary to improve the safety. Officer Glass just gave a report on what he has done, and that's a great thing. So, parents deserve knowing that their child is safe at school. But they also have the right to know that their kid is safe from the time they get on that yellow bus till they get off of that yellow bus. We pay, I was told, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for a school bus. It has a truck chassis under it. It is heavy duty. It has padded seats for the protection. And this, as Ms. Jacobs said, those kids were safe in that bus. When we let them out at that intersection, and they had to walk, or they had to get in a car with someone who we didn't know, I say we, then something needs to be fixed. And if policy was followed, now, policy's a framework. It's not law.
That's correct.
Mr. Plant told us here one day, policy only goes as far as the school board wants to go along with it.
That's correct.
But if policy was followed in this instance, then we need to change policy.
That was one of my next.
We need to change policy. I would suggest that this board have a work session and look at every policy that we have for transportation between now and September so we will be prepared to change policy, excuse me, with the approval of the lawyer at TSPA. And do something, and in the meantime, put a stop to this letting, putting kids off through the director of schools until the situation is remedied. They could have continued to deliver those kids and pick them up while the adults in the room solve the problem. But I don't want to see this happen again. I do not. And I don't think there's any board member here that will agree that this can happen again for the safety of the bus, for the potholes, for the rocks in the road. This needs to stop and get this corrected before someone gets hurt or worse.
So let me ask the board as a whole, would you rather have all the policies come together in a meeting for that night? Or have a special session for just the transportation policies? I mean, it's up to y'all. I, I mean, me and Michael could call a session at any point. We can call it Friday, but I just want to, you know, y'all give me your opinion. It doesn't matter to me. It does matter. We need safety issues, and if the policy needs to be changed, we need to bring it up, address it, and then vote on it. I agree.
I would suggest just the transportation policy.
Just a policy.
At this time, the transportation policy.
Well, no, that's, yeah, I, I agree on that, but do we want a special session and then come back on a regular session board meeting? Or have it during a board meeting and bring it up then? Go ahead, Brendan.
It doesn't matter to me as long as we get it taken care of. And I'd like to say I appreciate every board member, Mr. Atkins, for taking their time to look at this. I've drove, I went out there and drove it myself, and I know several other members here did too. And children six and eight years old have no business walking.
So how many policies do we have on transportation?
Eight or ten.
It'd be several. Some of them are.
So let's, I'll make, go ahead and decision, Mr. Atkins, go ahead and get a time and a date where everybody can agree on to have a special session on transportation policies, and we'll look at each one. And if we need to change them, we'll change them that night, and then we'll vote on them at the next regular board meeting. Which brings up my next point would be September twenty-first. So between now and September twenty-first, we'll have a special session on the transportation policies. Does anybody agree on that? Go ahead, Brendan.
One other, one other suggestion I might make, between now and then, between now and the time that this is finalized, no children are left out. Come to Mr. Atkins before he stop a bus route.
Well, was, I mean, I don't think the bus route was stopped. It was just a.
Well, the kids were, before you don't pick the kids up.
Bus not be able going down a private road because of my damages. Is that correct?
Well, the bus has been going down for ten or fifteen years down that private road.
Down that same road?
That same road.
Okay.
I've been down fifty times.
It's not going to be fixed by the county. They have policy. It had to be brought up. And there was twenty thousand dollars mentioned that the road superintendent said it would take to get the road up to county standards where they could take it over. Who's going to pay that? Who has twenty? That's be a thousand dollars a home on that road to fix it.
So during, okay, for a special meeting, we'll, we'll discuss all that, special session meeting. And Mr. Atkins will reach out to everybody and give two dates, please.
Okay.
Between now and, and the twenty-first, and everybody agrees, the two dates and the time.
Thank you, Ms. Caruso.
Go ahead.
I too have been on the road. I traveled the road when I first learned of this problem. It definitely was in bad shape, definitely needed detention. Also traveled the road today. Improvement has been made, but additional improvement needs to be made too, soon.
And we, we, yeah, we can decide that in the special session. If we need our maintenance crew to come out there with some chur, we got a dump truck, we just bought one, fill it up with chur, smooth it over. I, I don't know. That'll be, that'll be something we'll decide.
I, I understand. I, I do know that there are criteria that's, that has to be met to get that road on the county road list. So one thing that we need to determine or find out before, I used to remember, but I don't recall what that criteria, what, what they are. But that criteria needs to be brought to this meeting, just because I'm bringing it up now, to see what has to be, what we have to do to get the road on the county road list so they will maintain it.
And like I said.
Needs to be.
Like I said at the beginning of this issue, call your commissioners, call, you know, call the mayor down at Loretta. Call Lawrence, call Blake, just to see what's going, what happened. Call the road superintendent. You know, if we all say, well, we're sitting down with one issue with safety, and we don't want our kids to be done that, put it on that too. Hey, we got safety. Do you have the same issue with, in your minds as we do? See what they say? I know Blake does because I've talked to him about it.
Yeah. Well, it definitely needs to be on the county road list.
I do too. Go ahead.
I, I talked to the county executive on, on this after I found out what was going on, and I went over there and rode down the road, drove down the thing, and he told me there was twenty more roads in the county just like it. And, and I think that information needs to come out too. We're dealing, we're dealing with one road, but I was told that there's, there's that many more.
Does the buses go down them twenty roads?
I don't know.
Yeah.
See, that's what we need to know.
That's what we need to find out.
See, that's the issue though, Mr. Knightert. In this instance, those kids haven't had a bus since school started. You know, if you drive, I told Mr. Atkins a while ago, if you drive from the trussel, train trussel south of Lawrenceburg, right down here, and you drive north to Walmart, Red Lion, you have to watch those holes or you'll knock the front end out of your car.
I agree.
Now, they're, they're not holes like they are on that road, but they are manhole covers. Roads are deteriorating all over the county. I mean, they are. But the issue is not basically the road. The issue is stopping the transportation of those children, the safety of those children. And that's got to be fixed. And I, I agree one hundred percent with what Ms. Jacobs just now told Mr. Atkins. Put a stop until we get this worked out. Put a stop and let him know when this issue surfaces again between now and our meeting because this can't happen. It just cannot happen anymore.
Is the bus going down the road now?
Started yesterday.
Yes, it started yesterday? Okay.
And it's been going for, ever since that subdivision started, till this year.
But if they just fix the potholes, it's going to happen again.
Yeah.
Because rain's going to, you know, so, yeah, we need a, we'll, we'll get a solution during this meeting. Any further questions, comments?
Well, I've got a question. In the meantime, then, we don't get to it, and they get more potholes, what does the bus driver do?
He has to get the kids.
I would think, based on the policy that I shared with the board this weekend, where it talks about final determination made by the transportation supervisor, she had to make that call. I mean, we, we've asked this person to make sure that bus inspections are taking place, that drivers are properly trained, so forth and so on. And I guess the board would have to say, we do not want you making that decision. We don't want you ruling on the safety or travel path for your buses. I don't know that the board wants to do that, or I wouldn't, I don't think I would encourage you to do that. If he's not making it, who is? Because there are kids on that bus who are going down a road that the transportation supervisor has said is a concern and deems it to be unsafe. So we, the board would have to say, we, we overruled that. We want to change the policy. I, I don't know. I, that would be something I'm happy to run up the line to an attorney and ask them, what, what do we do if this?
That same supervisor that makes the decision about that road and potholes, are they making the decision about letting those children off of that bus and transferring them into another car? You know, if it came down to my grandchildren or my children when they were young, I had rather them be on that school bus instead of letting them off. If I was told, I live three tenths a mile off Forty-three Highway. If I was told that they were no longer going to travel Freedom Road, and my grandchildren had to walk from Highway Forty-three, I wouldn't have the control that these parents have had. They have been very cooperative and give us time to bring this up. I wouldn't have that control, as many of you probably already have seen. We've got to stop that transfer of those kids. They'd be better off if we put them on homebound. At least they'd be in their own homes. We cannot control them getting off of that bus and who they go with, walking. Watch the news. See what's happening in this country. It's not like it was when we were in school, any of us. So we can do something about this, gentlemen and ladies.
So I think we will.
I'll be quiet. I do agree that bus needs to go down the road. I know the road is rough, but I want to say this. The, the bus supervisor, the one over there, he's in charge of that now. If he makes that decision, that bus is not to go down that road, she has to, whoever's driving that bus has to go with that decision. I mean, that's where it is now. That's my, that's my opinion. I mean, you, I mean, you can't, it's, it's, we don't need to micromanage the school bus supervisor, but he needs to make good decisions.
Well, I can, I can speak to that. I have spoken to Mr. Aldridge on that road. I, I met with him in person Wednesday night after he had put in a lot of time and energy in getting that drive in much better shape. And I talked to him today, and he admits it's, it's in bad shape. And these poor folks have, they're in a bad situation, but he is willing to continue to maintain that road the best he can. But they, they have, as Dr. Mabry said, they've gone above and beyond with what we asked them to do. And so the times that I've ridden it, I, I wrote it, the first day I heard about this, I wrote it on a Sunday, and I wrote it this past Wednesday. And two of the three times, it's much improved. And it's because of those folks out there who take safety of their children and grandchildren to heart and did what they had to do. Because unfortunately, the county can't mess with the road, can't do work to the road. And according to the comp trailer's office, who I've spoken with twice, says, we can't. So we're, our hands are tied, and these, these folks are stuck in the middle of a bad situation. And until something changes regarding how things are constructed, we're, we're, we're in a catch twenty-two.
Who actually owns the road?
I don't, who, I don't know. I don't know who owns a private dr- drive like that.
Whoever developed the subdivision. Who built those houses?
When that subdivision started, it started with one person, and I won't call no names. He and his wife got a divorce. The wife got property. And from that, whoever finished it, I don't know. But the original developer lost it in a divorce to his wife.
So, so just to recap of what we're trying to accomplish here is, number one, is the safety of their children. And number two, we're going to have a special session on all the transportation policies. And, and, and we'll do it between now and our next meeting, which will be the twenty-first of September. Get two dates and times and dress, and bring it out to the board, and y'all vote on what's the best time for y'all to make this special session.
And Ms. Chairman, if it will help, I will pull all the transportation policy, policies and share in the weekly updates so you don't have to search.
Exactly, exactly. And also, on another note, and this is a side note, it, it, it's just, it, I can't illiterate. Regardless whose property, whose driveway it is, you know, somebody had to approve that development of that.
Property.
Property there. So, you know, just do some research and call it, hey, you know, do you know this development didn't do this? Can you reach out and do something? And I'm sure it's got to be the commissioners over the county or over that property somewhere. But just, just call the commissioner and see what they can get them on board. And also, we need to have two issues here. One, and the main issue is, keep in mind that the bus was not allowed to go down that due to his call. And the other issue is, the students was, and the issue was the students were left out near or on that road. And as I recall, the bus did not leave until them students were in a safe place. Is that correct or no?
I can't speak to that. I've heard different things. What I know is hearsay.
Okay, so, I mean, did anybody, I think that we called about the video, right? Did anybody saw the video on the? No? Okay. Okay, so if I was thinking of the same issue, I mean, the bus driver did not leave or did not back up until the students were safe. So that's two issues here, right? Bus not going down.
I haven't heard anything about that.
Bus not going down the road and students being left out, not safe. Correct?
I don't.
Okay.
But I may note to find out.
Okay. All right. Any last issue before we have a motion to adjourn?
Chairman Caruso, the last item on the agenda is the next board meeting at five P.M.
That's correct.
I would like for the board to consider moving our regular, regular meetings to five-thirty. I would like for the board to consider moving our regular, regular meetings to 5:30. That is a personal request because it does affect, you know-
That was going to be my next issue on October meeting, I mean, September, because I too have been transferred to another county due to work and it'll be difficult for me to get here at 5:00. So we can address this in September or take a vote on it now, whichever.
I would like to raise it up for vote tonight.
Tonight, okay.
Mr. Caruso, I move that we change our regular monthly meeting to 5:30 to accommodate each and every school board member.
So we have a motion to change that meeting to 5:30? Do we have a second?
I second it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Can I make one comment?
All opposed? I'm sorry, go ahead.
That is in the rules, according to TSBA, which is supposed to accommodate any board member's work.
I agree. That's what we're doing, that's what we're doing.
Not a shopping trip or vacation, but their work.
Good deal. So motion carries. The meetings will be at 5:30, starting in September 21st. Thank you.